I don't know, I mean, I have, I started.
There's the battery about recent secure.
It's September 10th. Meeting of the Millbrook Board of Preston East. Stand to the flag and remain standing for a moment inside.
Regent Legionists to the fire in the United States of America. To your brother, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the Lord.
Please remain standing. And say a few words about the anniversary of September 11th, which is tomorrow. Down there, so the photo was kind of pointing in. Each year, the anniversary of September 11th serves as a solemn reminder of the lives lost, the bravery shown, and unity forged in the face of unimaginable tragedy. On that day in 2001, nearly 3,000 people, some even from this community and from nearby communities, perished in the terrorist attacks that shook the world and changed the course of history. Remembering 9/11 is not only about honoring those who died, but also recognizing the courage of first responders, the resilience of survivors, and the strength of communities that came together in grief and solidarity. It reminds us of the fragility of peace and the importance of vigilance, compassion, and unity in the world, still facing threats of violence and division. Pause to reflect, we commit to never forgetting, not just the events of that day, but the lessons they left behind about the value of life, the power of unity, and the enduring spirit of hope. Thank you.
Mayor Doral?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Justice Buckland?
Here.
Justice Mawson?
Here.
Justice Sejji?
Here.
Okay, slowly to a number of you about Community Day. There's some materials in the back, materials floating around online. There's a dessert contest that's open for the public. There's a scarecrow contest, which the Village Hall will be participating in. There's more information on both those things in back. Similar to previous years, going to be different organization throughout the village, with tables and, you know, different kind of activities going on in the village. We'll have a table. We'll have some prizes and swag. We're going to have a trivia contest based on a project that Chief had us started, kind of looking back into the archives. Police Department started, but the trivia will be on just kind of old articles we find relevant to the village. That will be kind of fun, history lessons for all involved, so I think we're all gonna try to work the table for a couple hours and award prizes to the winners. Everyone's a winner on that day. So that should be fun. Please participate to the extent that everyone can. The next week, the Village Hall will be closed. Clerk Witt, Deputy Clerk Zekko will be away for NITE home training, which has been a couple of years for them, about that a while, so that'll be good learning experience. We'll expect the full report upon your return. Great. Did everyone receive the minutes that Clerk Witt sent around a couple, a couple days ago? Any changes, corrections, amendments? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Go ahead, second. All in favor? Thank you. Vouchers have been sent around. I think everyone's signed already. Any questions about the vouchers? Can I have a motion to approve the vouchers?
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead, second. All in favor? Thank you. Annual training, annual training are relevant for all village employees, us, members of the planning board, ZBA, any kind of village, what was the term you used? Officer?
Anyone under the village, who works for the village, any board member.
Employees, board members, anyone. And there's two trainings that are required. Sexual harassment, this is New York State, and
Violence in the workplace.
You'll probably do it through work, you'll probably do it through work, I do it through work. If anybody else does it through their
Are they GCN?
Yeah. Give you a certificate or something.
Yeah, so one more time, do you just want me to print that out or?
Yeah, just send it over.
Took it here last year.
Otherwise, we're going to hold it here.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to have that because.
We'll hold it here for, for everyone. Date to be determined. Clerk Witt was thinking sometime in August to get this done.
October, August.
Close enough. Talk to you guys. We'll communicate with the planning and ZBA members.
Yeah.
Everyone has to do it, bottom line.
We have October 16th. We have safety day. I'm riding my favorite. All the highway departments.
Okay.
We won't be around that day.
Alright.
It's a necessary requirement, so we gotta do it. Thank you for your cooperation there. legislator Austin, where you are.
Hi.
Nice to see you.
You as well. Thank you, thank you for having me on your agenda.
Of course.
I will just say that we had our legislative monthly meeting on Monday, so two days ago. Our agenda is pretty light, as it normally is this time of year, kind of the lull before the crash of our budget season, which will be upon us next month, we start the budget review, and having conversations in earnest with department heads. So it was a light agenda. The only thing that we had on non-consent, which is a very big item, I think, was that we did hire a commissioner of emergency response. We, our Dana Smith left last year, and we had Bill Beal acting as the acting commissioner, and he had done such a great job for us. We really encouraged him to stick it out and become the commissioner. So as you guys know, with this EMS data that we're collecting and the PATA project, this was his kind of baby, so it really makes sense for him to continue on the job. So we did appoint him unanimously at our meeting on Monday to be the commissioner of emergency response. And so we're looking forward to his third quarter data when it ends and reviewing that, and then looking in earnest at some IMAs with municipalities and looking at how we're gonna pay for EMS service moving forward and what it's gonna look like countywide. So it's an important update, but it was a generally light agenda.
Okay. I saw something today, I think, from the county executive's office about reaching out for federal help
She did, she's, yes. Just that, that, you know, that we're in, that we're in nationally, statewide, and certainly countywide, and an EMS crisis. So asking, you know, I think it's just another means of asking for assistance.
Keep us
But she did do a press release today.
Keep us abreast on that progress.
Absolutely. Yes, you know, the data is important, and I know I've shared it with you, and
Yep.
I'm happy to share it each quarter as it comes along.
Please.
Again, the village of Millbrook, our, the response times are good. Town of Washington, your response times are good. You know, the volunteers are doing a great job, our paid services is doing a great job. It's not response time we have a problem with, it's paying for it that we're having a problem with. So there, you know, if, if that sounds very flippant, but we are very lucky that we have the services that we have. Unfortunately, we have a financial problem having to pay for them. But if you look at countywide, our response times are good.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. As we, all set?
Yep.
As we go to Matt and Don, just in regards to EMS, NDP, our current provider, they had reached out to me a couple of weeks ago. They have since been acquired by a competitor, Empress, who also provides EMS services throughout the county, as you guys know. So that closing, I think it already might have taken place. It doesn't affect our current contract, which is basically in effect for several years, with price increases in those years, but those should be guaranteed. So the current contract, um, being in effect.
The next, next two years are guaranteed to stay up to on all the current contracts.
Yeah, I think there maybe, there was a provision for a renewal for maybe one extra year, I think.
Usually there was that, and I'm not sure will be the same.
Whenever that contract is, is up, you know, we are up to Empress's and any other providers, potential price increases, something, something to think about certainly. Alright, Chief and President Rockford.
Alright. Those are the numbers for July. Nothing too crazy there, or out of, out of the normal. Nothing stood out. Anyone have any questions on the numbers they see? Again, nothing too crazy here. What, we did have two structural fires. One was called in as one, but it was a smoke investigation from a furnace. Another was a mutually fired, or a trailer fire in Dover. Again, other than that, nothing too crazy on the numbers. Any questions on any of that stuff, guys?
No, we, we took a look at that, the agreement for the training facility, the town, Don. I believe Mr. Mackey reviewed that, and so we sent that to the town board and
Yep, talking to Matt.
Should be going.
Yep.
In progress there.
We're gonna be really getting underway in a couple of weeks. I just have to get a couple of places on dumpsters, and then we're gonna tear that building down. And after that, it's gonna be quick to get the new building up.
Cool.
So.
Great.
Again, I am happy to report, since our last meeting, I believe we've gotten six new members almost, not including the associate members. So numbers keep, people keep coming in and applying. Sarah, if you could send me a current list of the members you have, because I think during this summer, I've gotten behind on getting onto you, so I just wanna make sure I have everyone I'm supposed to have.
Okay, I'll see when I have.
Thank you. This way I can make sure your list is up to date and insured and covered. And other than that, that's all I've got. Thank you.
The only thing I had is, we haven't met since July. The carnival went well. We brought in profit about, just about $11,000.
Great.
Next year, we're do, probably gonna be at Bennett.
Exciting stuff.
That opens October 5th, I understand?
Yes.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Matthew.
Question? First off, I just wanted to give a very kudos to the fire company for what they did. It's a great success. I know my grandkids are alone, probably made a profit.
Thank you.
I have a question about the parade. In years past, I understood the criteria to be that elected officials who represented the town, the village, whether it be the village, the town, the county, or the state level, were invited to be in the parade. There was a restriction against campaigning, legitimate campaigning. And in the parade, a little true was that going in there, down the parade, and he was actively campaigning. So I'd like to know, is the criteria still what I referenced, referenced before?
I didn't know about the campaigning. This is the first I've heard of it, from July 12th. When he went by the reviewing stand, he was not campaigning. That's where I saw him. But that is the criteria, that you can, you're only to be in the parade if you're invitation only, and that you cannot campaign.
Good. So did he get an invitation?
He didn't.
Okay. So I, so this isn't the first time that this happened, where someone's been in the campaign, in the parade, and campaigning, or guess what you mean? I'd really like to see some kind of a, someone guaranteeing at the start of the parade that there's a, a checkoff to make sure the person should be in, in the parade, if they have a banner, for example, that they're not gonna have it displayed. Is that possible?
Uh, we can look into that.
Oh, be good. Thanks.
Chief?
Okay, so, so July, officers handled 199 calls for service, 52 of which were for foot patrol, the rest were just miscellaneous calls. 16 parking summons issued, 11 uniform traffic tickets issued, and five criminal investigations conducted. Questions about July? So for August, officers responded to 150 calls for service. Again, 47 of those foot patrol, the rest miscellaneous. As you can see in the numbers, that traffic enforcement has increased quite a bit. 16 parking summons issued and 16 uniform traffic tickets issued during August, and four criminal investigations, either under investigation or closed at this point.
The parking summons and the vehicle stops, is that something that we're, we're promoting?
Yes.
And, and the sort of justification or explanation for that being? I mean, I know we reduced the speed limit.
Yes.
So part of it is, is enforcement of, of the new 25 mile an hour speed limit.
Right, so we, we are not a ticket writing machine. We're not trying to generate revenue. Our sole goal is to provide traffic safety. So we get traffic complaints from the, from the residents, whether, typically it's speeding, but there are some other complaints that come in. The officers go out, we do directed enforcement at those locations. And what we're finding is some of these locations, there's a genuine problem. Speeding being the biggest problem, but there's always other things that come along with that. So they've done a good job of coming out and slowing people down, especially now that school has started. Since beginning of September, things have, and you'll see those numbers next month, things have, enforcement has amped up considerably. And that is because we're doing traffic surveys and we're finding that these traffic complaints that are coming in are valid, and they need to be addressed, and the only way to address them
So we have residents who are calling and saying people are going too fast by my front door.
Right, yeah.
Um, the other question that I've gotten from a couple of people is the black car. What, is that a village vehicle? Is it a, I, I just, where did that come from?
So the last Ford Explorer we had, which was 251, was totaled in a motor vehicle accident. So the funds from that vehicle allowed us to purchase a newer vehicle in better shape for, for no cost to the owner.
Okay.
What happened was the insurance company totaled the Explorer and gave us, or allowed us to purchase a vehicle that was comparable in value. So that is an alternate vehicle, and that's, you know, I had this conversation with the mayor, you know, if we have vehicles that are out of service, we can't, we have to have a police vehicle.
No, I remember, and a backup, right. I remember, yes, I remember this conversation. I didn't, I didn't realize that, that, that sort of unmarked vehicle had taken the place of the Ford Explorer, essentially.
Yes.
Okay.
And then also, we, instead of spending money on like decals, that's how I see it. So instead of spending money on like additional
Good, that's, that's, that's an explanation. I just wanted to be able to, because people were a little concerned, you know, that why was there this unmarked vehicle roaming this region of the village?
It's, well, it's, it hasn't been on patrol. I do take it out and drive it occasionally because it has to be driven.
Be driven, yeah.
So it's, like you said, it's really just an alternate for us.
And we had a question back in.
Yes, thank you for all you do. I'm just wondering with the new speed limit, is it possible, I see signage sometimes in other towns where you put up the sign that shows what the speed is, and it says slow down, go up, because of the 25? Because you do see a lot of people speeding down Franklin, from both directions. Wouldn't it be possible to put those signs up for a bit, just to try to monitor and help people to remember what 25 feels like?
Great idea.
Well, Franklin hasn't changed, right, but the other roads have changed, obviously. And when the new signs were installed, on top of them, the highway supervisor put new, on top of the signs to catch people's attention.
No, I've seen that, yeah.
Right.
But when you were sitting there for a while, certain vehicles, you feel, you know that they're not doing.
Right, and that's really up to us, so, and we encourage residents to report traffic complaints. If they're speeding on your road, please call us and report it and make a formal police report.
I worry the most, sorry, pardon. I worry the most about Franklin because cars on both sides, people going back and forth, and then you get some people going really fast up and, you know.
But I don't know that the village has those electronic
I think other villages have them.
No, I'm sure, and, and the town of Washington may have them, or the county may have them, or 2K may have them.
We do have one.
We do have one, okay.
Yes. So we can install, install a digital speed sign. But ultimately, I mean, that, that's, that's nice. It's nice for appearances, but it doesn't solve the problem.
I find it helps me sometimes when I'm going from a 40 and going back to a 25. Reminds you
Right.
of the velocity, yes. But thank you, yeah. That would be great to put that in.
Oh, really?
So I have a related question from Valley Farm. So at the very beginning, at 44, it says new 25 miles an hour, checked by radar.
We do have radar, yeah.
What's called?
Yeah, all the
But the other end, of course, is 45 miles an hour.
Right.
And we've got a lot of Exactly, so it's at the very beginning when you enter Valley Farm, but if you enter the other way, my point is people are speeding all the time.
There is another speed limit sign on the other side on the town line.
I couldn't find it.
It's right before, um, Orchard.
Yeah, Orchard.
There's three signs right there.
Maybe they have children, some, uh, children, you know, slow children. We got kids all over the street there. And these, these trucks coming barreling through. And, yeah, I mean, you know, they get in at 45 miles an hour, and they're just not paying attention.
Okay, so if you think that they're speeding on village roads, if you call and file, people would be happy to come out and do a traffic study and see actually what's going on, because a lot of times, it's an appearance of speed, and you found that. I've found out throughout my career, that sometimes an appearance of speed looks like people are flying, but a traffic study will bear that out. And then, you know, we'll conduct the traffic studies and determines that there's actually people speeding, and be happy to enforce it there.
And just on Franklin, so Franklin's a state road, and we had requested the state to lower it in conjunction with our village-wide reduction, which they denied.
Well, the curve, you see, you know, 45 to 30, that's on the curve there, you know. But, you know, when you slow down, sometimes a person will not yield.
Yeah.
But, to be honest, sometimes it's, it's some of those big commercial vehicles.
Yeah.
Which is
And that's the scariest thing, when they're flying up the road.
No, for sure, and that's something that we've been
Momentum.
We've been working on with the state and the town. We signed an IMA with the town, an intermunicipal agreement with the town, to basically establish a truck room outside of the village, outside of Franklin. We're waiting on feedback from the state. Assuming they okay that, we could start putting up signage, disallow large trucks, big commercial, you know, 18-wheelers from coming into the village, and then use the police to enforce that. So more to come on that in the, in the short future.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna, um, any local businesses that might need that large truck.
Local deliveries would obviously be exempt.
Thank you.
After investigations, we have training. We have member of Deuce County Family Services coming in at the end of September, as well as a member of the district attorney's office to provide training to our officers on the domestic violence and lethality assessment program. Under projects, if you look at technology, we had a, recently had a new computer server installed that was purchased with the law enforcement technology brand. It was installed for the purpose of acting as a central hub for department data storage and processing advantages in departments' network, ensuring secure access and efficient information sharing across all devices. New desktop PC was installed to replace an eight-year-old computer that had outlived its current use. Property evidence PC was installed and was repurposed to provide secure storage for records and data related to intake retention or release of property and evidence. Under records, over the past several months, more than 30 years of police department records have been carefully reviewed, sorted, and archived. This was done in accordance with New York State Records retention laws. All materials have been designated either for secure archiving or lawful destruction. And then under procedures, we're conducting a comprehensive review of our procedures with the objective of enhancing the quality of service for our residents. Focused on strengthening how our members respond to calls, ensuring that investigations are coordinated and thorough. Any questions about any of those items?
Chief?
That's all I have, folks.
Okay. And we're still gonna do your policy approval at some point as well, correct?
Okay. Just let me know if you, what you need, and I'll make sure you get it.
So I think you had sent us some materials, which I, this is several months ago now going back, new policies and procedures that the chief
Right, like a new manual.
Right. I don't know if we wanna continue this conversation again, or are we ready to approve what's been distributed? Or we wanna revisit it in a long time?
Let's revisit it. Just give us a chance to, to double, yeah, review again.
Send everything again, is that possible?
Sure. I, I can resend you those policies, and if there's something that, that I did send
But you emailed them to us.
I did.
So it's in email, it's fine.
Yeah, I just, I don't even remember when this was. I mean, it was a while ago.
Yeah, you did. Right. We didn't delete it.
No, no.
Right, so it'll be there. I mean, I, I think mine will be there, okay.
That was a, that was a small snapshot of 150 overall policies. So if there's something that stands out in your mind that you think you wanna see, just let me know, and I'll include that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, once again, not on speeding. I, I'm just, I don't know if what comes into this record and the procedures has anything to do with the way in which we treat people in our community who might be migrants.
No, it doesn't. We're talking about looking at how we conduct best criminal investigations unrelated to, to detainees or immigrants, and refining our process to make sure that we're meeting state standards, that we're doing thorough and complete investigations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Chief, what, what, what do we do if I shows up in the village? How does that work?
We'll, we'll follow state law. Governor Holt has set very, has set very strict standards about how law enforcement may assist with federal agents on detention and capture.
So it's kind of out of our hands a little bit?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yeah, I, I have a question.
Lori, I know you had to leave. Did you wanna say anything before you guys got out of here?
Okay.
Sorry to put you in the spot. You don't have to.
No, no, I'd like to. Sorry, it's a little emotional thing for me. Um, so, um, I noticed something came up about the hometown heroes. And, um, I thought it was like a great thing. I was like so happy about it. I say, you know, Millbrook is like one of the only villages or towns around that didn't have it. And, you know, my husband and I have been together 42 years, and I would probably say we've had about 10 conversations with our children about Vietnam. First thing he did is, other than losing 17 local friends here that were killed there, he took his uniform off. And whenever he went to family events, and they'd say, okay, veterans, you know, stand up, you know, and he would never, ever, ever, never talked about it, but was embarrassed that he was there. My father was a Marine, he was in Korea. Stepfather, Army, Vietnam as well. So, um, I had heard that there were some people that didn't feel that we should be having this in Millbrook. And I know it's not a boy year thing, but it's almost like some of the holidays that we celebrate, you know, it takes about, you know, four or five months where we prepare for it, and then we have the holidays, and then everything gets taken there. And I just can't imagine that, you know, so many of these, you know, are veterans and active duty that he's literally put their lives, I mean, your 19-year-old, your 18, he went in at 18, came home at 20, and his life changed forever. The things that he saw, he never talked about. And I, I don't know, I just don't understand how we cannot honor them for a short period of time here in our village. And he would never even think of coming here tonight, because he says, I don't want any, this is something that I wanna do for our six children and our ten grandchildren, just to show honor to him and to, you know, let his legacy live on and, uh, all that he went through. And like I said, we went to the Vietnam Memorial, and he couldn't even, he took like a step toward it, and he just like broke down like a baby. And, um, you know, lo- losing seventeen friends and not just getting shot and killed immediately, but some that suffered, suffered, suffered. And to this day, he's still suffering. And I'm here with my best friend, you know, and two of her boys, so I've known since birth, went to Millbrook High School for seven years, they went to Afghanistan and Iraq and special forces, they couldn't even talk about what they did when they were there. And those boys, in my opinion, should be honored for a short period of time in our village. And it's just how I feel, and I know everyone might have other ways of thinking and seeing, and, and I respect that, but I'm just hearing the voice how I feel about my husband, our family, and all those other veterans that have been out there. Those are your two boys. But, so thank you.
Thank you.
Are we on that topic?
We're not, we're not.
Sorry.
We haven't got our grandchildren.
I'm sorry.
We just, no, it's me.
I just wanna say, please, thank you for your husband's service, your, your service.
I'm just curious, is this because on other villages, you see the deceased being honored on the flag? And you're saying that you want the living to also be honored on the flags because they serve? Cause your husband's still alive? No, 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 I gotta say, cause other villages, you see the, you know, birth and death, you know, you know. So I'm just, yeah.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you. Thank you.
I, I, I have letters that I printed out from people who came here tonight, and not one person has any objection to honoring veterans.
That's wonderful.
I think the problem is there's a lack of understanding about the timing. Is it for Veterans Day? Is it for four months? And what we see riding through Pleasant Valley are illegible, tattered, filthy signs. And that's not an honor, that's a disgrace. So we, I think the concern is also, we have one million road, there is an enormous amount of what I'm just gonna call visual noise when you put up banners as people are trying to drive, there's speed limit signs, there are children crossing the road, there are a million things going on. So none of this has anything to do with the content of it being for veterans. If we wanted to put up signs that said something else, it would be also distracting and maybe not the best location. Um, so nothing to do with, no one, I see has any objection, it's just, that I just-
The noise. One quick comment, even though we're not on it yet.
Yeah.
So I think that the village of Millbrook has the most wonderful tribute to our veterans. There is no other community that has anything comparable to the Tribute Garden. We plant trees in memory of, if you wanna know, that if you go to the top of Tribute Garden and you stand under a tree, and you wanna know who that tree was planted in honor of, you can go to the plaque and you can find out. And the whole point there of having the playground at the top is that that's what people were fighting for, for the future, for the children, for their safety and their well-being and their happiness. And to me, there can be no finer tribute to our veterans than the Tribute Garden. Sorry.
Thank you.
Not on the topic.
Put it better than I could.
That's for all of them.
I apologize, ma'am.
So we'll, we'll come back.
Can I add an agenda?
No, you come now, I'm gonna move on right now. We'll come back to this conversation. Um, Scott.
No, Ethan's up.
Ethan, all right, Ethan.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Highway Department had a busy two months in this hot weather, we had, um, trimmed all the trees on Franklin Avenue to make it safer for the carnival, fireman's parade, um, for pedestrians and fire apparitions that were going up Franklin Avenue. Layered some sidewalks on Franklin Avenue before the parade, to make sure there's no bad trip hazard for everybody. Uh, removed and replaced a hundred-foot section of sidewalk on Merritt Avenue just below the DMV. Got Washington Avenue all ready to be milled and paved. Got paved on the twenty-first. Um, topsoiled everything on the road edges, so the edges wouldn't break off, and weed whacked and sprayed all the sidewalks in the villages. And the last brush pickup we had for the year was Monday, September eighth, so no more brush getting picked up in the village till next year.
It's very sick. I love those pictures.
Yeah.
Wonderful service and much appreciated.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. I love that.
It's just a couple of pictures on pieces of sidewalks that were placed out on Valley, or, uh, we need two separate sections, even a spot a little over-
Did you brush the water feet?
Yes. Yep. It was brutally hot that day, I think it hit just about a hundred degrees when we were trying to finish it all. And that's, that, that's BMEC half asphalt doing the milling and paving on Washington Ave, and I think it came out great. We ended up going with an inch and a half binder layer and an inch and a half top, instead of just topping the whole thing, so hopefully the road will last a little bit longer this time. August.
Was it you or the state that works on Route forty-four?
The state.
Okay. Well, then I can compliment you.
Uh, prepared to catch basin up on Safari Drive, there's a big sinkhole on it. Uh, dragboxed a couple of sections on Church Street, we're going back next week to go finish Church Street, some dragboxing. Uh, we trimmed ninety percent of the sidewalks and, and roads with the trees. Right now, that number's a little low, we're up to over sixty loads of tree branches up to the town dump right now, so that's all, all of August. Um, some, another brush pickup. Uh, had an emergency pole replacement up at the firehouse, we had a little incident. A prop pole came down with a little help from a mower. Um.
That's all.
Picks no parking issue down on DMV, uh, kinda painted, cross hashed a little section down by DMV, and I haven't seen anybody really parking down in there, so that kinda helped.
Yeah.
Um, our employees took a Dick Safe class, uh, to recer- received their certification, every excavator operator interstate in New York needs to have that class. Um, then the trees were taken down, and we got a bid back from out on Lemon, they were the only ones to send anything back. And that's it.
Forget when, you also, um, painted the handicap spot in front of the library, which has been very well received, which we'll get to officially today, so thank you, thank you for that as well, Dave. I really appreciate it. So thank you, any questions, Ricky?
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Scott, sorry.
So, we're in order for July. Um, placed fresh relief valve with chlorine pumps as a plan. Uh, service line leak on Sharon Turnpike that was repaired, replaced the line, and while they had everything exposed, we replaced their curb valve. Go for the sewer.
How's the, um?
Good, I was just out there this afternoon.
Wells.
Stream is very low, but, uh, everything inside is good. Our, our levels are fine, so. Amazing. All right, so July, the sewer, uh, Arrow Construction videoed sewer mains. Continue working on the ORF as per our EPA plan, we had a DEC inspection. Um, all went well. Uh, rebuilt four manholes, Hanson and Harts Village.
As everyone knows, from the EPA audit, that was a, a long, you know, took a, took a long time, um, they want us to work on this ORF, and Scott came up with this aeration idea.
Look at the ORF. I'm sorry, I don't know what the, I knew that that's true, yeah.
Overflow reduction facility, it's one of those big tanks down on North Avenue, it's an old oil tank that basically is now part of our, our sewer system. When levels get really high, flows go in there until they be, till flows go down, and then they can be treated.
Do they ever overflow, like what they do in New York City, where they go into other places?
No.
No?
But it's something that we're getting rid of with our upgraded sewer plant, that's in progress. Um, but the EPA is still concerned about it because, um, sort of a dated technology. So we've had to aerate this top layer, and they came back to us a couple of weeks ago, wanted to have an update. So we're gonna be trying some additional ways to aerate, so they're not, it's not like they forgot about us, they're still continuing to check in on, on the progress.
Is that why they show the total coliform absent, or results not compliant?
Uh, total coliform is water, not sewer.
Oh, it's not measuring the amount of coliform in the water?
No, we're talking about-
Oh.
So you started just on update from my, from my EPA?
Yep. So, on the water side for August. Uh, shut the water off, uh, for Merritt Avenue, um. Expected three new water connections up on Maple Hill Drive. And installed new fire hydrant on Elm. Uh, new water valves went in on Maple Avenue. And replaced one water meter. Had two curb valves on Hanson replaced and one on Elm Drive. And there was a water leak out on County House Road, uh, the service line, uh, repaired by- All right, so it's sewer for August. Uh, we submitted our quarterly report to EPA as required. Still working on the ORF, which is an ongoing process. Um, earth care hauled sludge, and I met with the state DOT and Arrow Construction to discuss our plan for rehaving sewer made on Route forty-four, which will be taking place the twenty-second.
Where's that?
Uh, between, right at the end of Harts Village going up towards Valley Farm. I have to line that sewer line and there's going to be posts in the sewer main. So I met with Harold, who's doing the work, and the DOT to work out a plan so they can pull the posts without damaging the pipe.
So they're doing it now?
The state's pulling the posts, and Harold's gonna line it. Kind of process getting everybody coordinated, you know, together, so.
And, but is, is it all, is it an expense for us, or?
Well, the expense is lining the sewer main, which is in the budget, that's part of-
Yeah.
What I do.
Gotcha.
The DOT is, by having them pull the posts and not having someone come in from the inside and grind them down, which is why original, when I went out and got quotes, that was original, but then after having discussions, we, I got ahold of the DOT after a month or so. Um, and they are willing to pull the posts up, which is gonna save us well over ten grand.
I like that.
So.
Is that by the interfere with the traffic flow, or is that to the side?
Uh, well, temporarily. It'll be, you know, any construction on the road, they'll have probably one lane, like, we flag, we all-
And when, when is it gonna be?
Uh, the twenty-second.
Upset down.
Upset down.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about earth care, so where do they hold sludge to?
Uh, Beacon, they have a facility in Beacon they take it to.
And do they reprocess it and judge fertilizer, or?
I don't know what they do with it after they haul it up, they have a large facility there, um, so. And lastly, I don't have on here, but I had spoken to the mayor about this this afternoon. Um, we had, we were contacted by the New England Interstate Water Pollution Control Commission. They got information from the DEC about our INI problem, and they offer free assistance, um, and guidance on how to handle stuff, um, dealing with that, so I met with them today. And I'm gonna start the process of doing that and see what assistance they provide the village. It's, there's some possibility of them helping us secure funding for, for any work too, so. Uh, sounded pretty promising, so.
Yeah.
And it's free.
Free's good.
Free service, they get, they, they get money from the EPA, there's a grant they have that, so we have to have this done by the, by next June, so. We'll get that started and see what they can help us with, anything, so.
Just for, oh, and just one other thing that I mentioned to you, Julia, uh, the pump station, I know we had talked about-
Yeah, we talked about, with Dennis about putting some things in there.
Yeah, so I finally got George to speak to the land state architect down there.
Yeah, Ryan Bailey.
Ryan, yeah, and, um, I guess it's underneath a canopy, it's pretty shady, so he was concerned about planting evergreens.
Yes.
Um.
I know Dennis had some ideas of things that would, would be suitable there, Dennis Jenkin. And, but if Ryan has some suggestions as well?
Whatever suggestions he may or may not have, I think they're gonna wait till the spring, which is fine with Scott.
Okay. Right, for planting, yeah.
Yeah, so, that's the update there. Just wanted to keep in the loop there. Uh, okay, Scott, thank you.
You're welcome.
Before we move to you, can we just do, get Josh out of here?
No, I have a problem.
Thank you for coming.
Good beer?
You look very tan.
That's what the dermatologist said a while ago.
Very nice summer, so I'm jealous.
Outside.
Um, okay, so handicap spot.
Handicap spot, tonight you have a resolution to introduce the new law designating additional handicap spots, they're described on the second page of the, uh, resolution. Box spaces in total. And this resolution will introduce it to local law, uh, and also schedule a public hearing for October eighth. In case there's any comments about that.
Yes.
So you just need to everyone who, look at the resolution and then someone needs to make a motion to got the resolution as presented.
And the backstory here is they requested a handicap spot, um, which I think is a great idea, um.
They being the library board, yeah.
The library, correct. Um, Ethan and I had a couple of discussions, figured right in front of, this is where the ramp is.
Yeah.
Um, on the other side of the street, and the best, safest place to do it.
Right.
Uh, may not be perfect in terms of various ADA, um, whatever, but I think it was the best that we could come up with. And so, that's where we are, and I've heard from Courtney that it's been very well received by patrons, so. Um, any other-
And how many handicap spots do we have in the village, all told?
According to this, five. Uh, businesses might have their own.
Oh, okay.
So there's one there, there's two outside here, and there's two outside of the DMV.
There's a couple down on Truman Gardens parking lots, a couple down at Marone's.
But that's all, right?
And those are non- private, the ones are private?
That's all. Yeah. Any other questions?
I only ask because I've had friends that have had knee replacements, and they have them gotten their handicap stickers. So I say, if you're in private, it's okay to park, if you're in public, you can get a ticket, until they get their, you know. We have a lot of older people that are having surgeries around here.
Yeah.
You have a motion?
Yeah, someone to call for a motion, and someone to second it to-
I'll make this motion to the separate, please, number LL zero zero three two zero five point one.
I'll start from the motion.
I'll send him a motion.
You?
Mayor Dora?
Hi.
Justice Murphy?
Hi.
Justice Buckland?
Aye.
Justice Mossen?
Aye.
And Justice Sutti?
Aye.
Alright, thank you all. So we'll have a public hearing next month.
Confused. Are you, is this the one that is already there or is this?
Correct.
Oh, so it's there now and you're just approving it retro.
We're making it official.
Okay.
Alright.
Sarah knows what to do from there better than anybody.
Thank you, counselor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Sorry, if you'd like to.
Treasure Witt.
Alright.
Building Department.
So for building, I combined July and August. So we issued 11 building permits, one certificate of use, one certificate of occupancy, one certificate of compliance and a fire inspection. We collected $3,880 for the two months. Planning Board had a meeting in July and a meeting in August and zoning had a meeting in August. I think they were for public hearings, I think for Bennett or Kittle.
There was a public hearing where the board didn't shut. There was no forum.
Yeah, it was, I, I'm not sure about that, but yes, I, I did hear that.
Yeah.
I did hear about that, unfortunately. Um, so that's all I have for building.
Okay.
And planning.
You?
Yep. So for treasure, I've presented to you, here are the July bank balances. And then for New York class. Here's for August. And your class. For, as for our report, Senior Count Clerk McLaughlin and I, we were able to submit the annual financial report on time. And then we are just been collecting taxes and just as a reminder, October 31st is the last day I can collect taxes and then they're turned over to the county. To date, we have we have unpaid $24,317.37. And that is 13 residents that still have to pay. And that's about all I have for. My phone over here. There's any questions? Sir.
It's.
Oh, no problem.
Okay, um, you stole my.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We've had a few conversations about the village procurement policy. Basically, if we wanna go out and get a quote for trees, for example. What, above a what, what amount do we need to, so bid, how many, et cetera. Basically, what is the cap where we have the, where our policy is? So it's, it hasn't, definitely hasn't increased in a long time, hasn't increased with inflation. I think it's becoming increasingly problematic for a lot of the department heads and various projects to kind of get done in a timely manner. So Sarah did some research looking at other municipalities. And came up with, I guess, some ideas and amounts. So what is the current amount? Remind everyone?
So currently, zero to $499, we need a written quote, email, fax or receipt. 500 to $19,999, we need three written quotes, email or fax quote. And that's just for regular. For public works, that's zero to $499, that's still one quote. And then 500 to $34,999, that's three written quotes, email or fax quotes. Anything under 30, or anything above 35,000 goes through the bid process and that is like, that's Gmail law, so we, that's something we can touch.
Yeah. Well, basically it's $500 right now that our policy kicks in. Again, pretty low.
Yeah.
Increasing that I think makes sense for everyone. It's kind of a little bit more a little efficient, like with the trees, for example.
Yeah.
Millbrook had the lowest procurement amounts that Sarah found. The second lowest started at 1,500. Most threshold started at 2,500, 3,000. And I mean, I kind of maybe fall in the middle there, 1,500, 2,000, I don't know.
Only two.
Two.
I would say two. It's reasonable, and I'm right in the middle.
Yes. So if that's the case, I think we'll come up with a resolution to amend the policy.
We could do either of that or at reorg too, that's usually.
Yeah, there's no terrible rush, but getting it done at some point in the next six months makes sense.
And by between, no. And there's other things I found, like Duchess County, they have like for local business consideration. So they have a whole policy for that, which is interesting. It's a good read, so I can, I could send that to you guys. They also include one for personal services and consultants since their ranges tend to be a lot higher. And then so source. So these are things we don't currently have in our procurement that may be something you guys might wanna consider to include. So there might be different, different levels if it's, if it's a consulting service versus, correct? Yeah, yeah, and how to go about. Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, so more to come on that. Sarah, thanks for all the hard work.
Yeah, sure.
And then the last thing is for the resolution to increase the for the tax collectors, our reminder fee is a dollar and postage and everything has gone up so much. And the highest we can go is $2, so I'm asking the village board to adopt a, this resolution that states that we can go from a dollar to $2.
The residents?
It's just those that need the reminder. It, it goes on their bill, so, yeah.
Can you board on this?
Nope.
I'll make a motion that we accept this.
Second.
Okay, Mayor Dora?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Justice Buckland?
Aye.
Justice Mossen?
Aye.
Justice Sutti?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, so. To return to the discussion that apparently everyone is here for. As a, so for this meeting, we are, you know, as a reminder, let's just go back a little bit of a timeline. I applied for a grant from Duchess County, a micro grant to establish some sort of hometown heroes program. Which was granted, so we received $5,000. As soon as we made a public announcement, we received another $1,000 donation from a very generous person here in the village. And as soon as I kind of put in a public announcement out, we received applications coming in, I think that first day, from people. And this is something that I think has been, not I think, it's been talked about in town for quite some time, going back several administrations. And it was seemingly never able to get done for a variety of reasons. I'm guessing we might hear about that tonight. You know, I think everybody that supports this and wants to do it, wants to do it in a way that's, you know, as inclusive and it's as coherent with Millbrook's aesthetic as possible. I agree that some other towns are, you know, chatty and ratty, which is certainly no way to honor veterans. Highway Supervisor Kelly's coming from East Fishkill where they have several hundred. And East Fishville, correct me if I'm wrong, and a lot of other communities, they will do them from Memorial Day until Veterans Day. And then take them down for the winter. The wind, the snow, the salt can be very degrading of, of the banners. So that's something that I would propose if, once we do this. Terms of final design and location, still up for, hasn't been finalized yet. I heard from, and we're not gonna be reading every single email for or against this tonight, that's not what this is about. If you would like to read a few, you certainly can, but we're not gonna be going on and on about this. You know, I heard from people mostly on Maple for some reason, who don't want it. And obviously, if somebody doesn't want it, somebody doesn't support what we're doing, we're not gonna put it in their face, you know, put it where they are. This is for people that want it and it would, you know, to the extent we can put it where people live and where they wanna do it, that's what we're gonna do. In terms of something we've talked about, Ethan and I, brackets, so in terms of the business district, I think it's not a great place for them. There's a lot of trucks come through the business district. There's no telephone poles in the business district. It's only small lighting poles that aren't really conducive to.
They're not, they're not, it won't be able to get the bottom of the banner tall enough for.
Yeah, they're just too small. They're not conducive to a banner. So, you know, telephone poles outside of the business district, your traditional telephone pole is, is probably the best place for them. Again, so from, let's say we do it beginning next Memorial Day. We even have a cutoff date of sometime maybe in the winter to get all those in. I would anticipate maybe anywhere from, and it's hard to say how many, anywhere maybe between 20 and 25 in this, in this first round. That would be going up.
Twenty, 25? 20 and 25?
Yeah. Um, I, I mean, it's hard to say, but as someone eloquently put, there's a lot of veterans in Millbrook and a lot of families that have wanted to do this and honor family members for, for many years. So that's where we are with that and let's try to keep any comments here to a few minutes because again, we haven't really finalized a lot of the details. And tonight is really just to establish a bank account to accept the money. So just basically establishing a line item to accept the money from Duchess County. Accept the money from the generous donation we already received and from checks that have already came in from residents. So that's where we are. So I'd love to hear from some people who are, have other comments.
Okay, so just to clarify, this is a federal complaint. It's already decided.
Um, well, let's, let's go to, let's go to Carol Anne first.
So I have a question. The application for the grant that you applied for, was it a specific application for a specific project? Or was it kind of general that we wanted money to try to honor the area veterans?
It's, it was, it was.
Was it for flags and to hang flags or was it?
It was for to establish a hometown heroes banner program, which is what we're talking about.
So it's a deal?
So it was specific and there was no discussion about that?
Just a discussion about potential location.
That's correct.
That's what we're discussing?
I want a different question. Only people who can pay the money can honor their.
No, so part of, in, in the in the application for this grant and also just generally, I think, I said we would use part of that money to establish a scholarship program for veterans who maybe can't afford it, who have since passed, whose families, you know, would like help to do it. So will you, we will allocate some portion of that money for vets who can't afford.
What's the fee that you're talking about right now?
The fee is $250.
And, and one more follow up question, kind of, why are you talking about honoring both living veterans as well as those who died in service? Is that part of the plan?
Living or dead.
So there's, there's hundreds and hundreds of, of people in the village. It's not just.
Certainly, certainly there are. I mean, people would have to apply and, you know, do it, but it's not just gonna get done just because there is a lot, you know.
And was any consideration given to focusing on the Tribute Garden, which I have always just adored. It's a very honored, hallowed ground and space where the children do go and it's not just drive by, it's, it's much more intimate than that and.
The Tribute Garden's great and, you know, we don't own the Tribute Garden, obviously.
No, could we consider working.
If, if you would like to speak to the Tribute Garden about doing something there, I would, I would, by all means, and I would support you and go with you. But I'm not gonna be, you know, waiting around for the Tribute Garden to either, you know, support or not support, such and ever.
Have they been asked?
They've been approached.
It's been a common, it's in the same category or?
It's a different nonprofit. I have a feeling they wouldn't be supportive of it, but if they, if they were to be supportive and they would want them there,
That'd be beautiful.
that would be, that would be great.
Do they have mockups of what it would look like?
Not yet, cuz they were just not, um, final design hasn't been finalized yet, but I'm happy to send you a couple kind of templates.
Well, it seems there should be a, a scope. There should be an end game. There's, it, it can't be over open ended in, in that you know, process where, well, now we have 22 and then we're gonna have 44 and then we're gonna have two.
Well, it's, it's for the veterans, so it's not for people that don't want them. It's for the people that do want them.
I'm not talking about desire. I'm talking about implementation of a plan that doesn't have a big, an end. It's open ended.
Well, it's open ended until we put an order in and then when they go up next for next award.
And then the application process ends and whoever has applied and paid, that's it, period end?
I wouldn't wanna close the door if people wanna, you know, do more.
Well, this is what I'm getting at. There has to be a scale that's agreed upon and locations that's agreed upon that can accommodate these. To just say, we're going to leave it open, you know, for whatever period of time, you won't have enough plate. I mean, these are not small things and it's not a small effort. It needs to be, it, I would, I would imagine it will have to be carefully considered. And all the locations picked, just not in front of someone's house because they paid for a banner. It's, it's gotta be a thematic thing. Should be an event. I mean, that's Nan's point about Tribute Gardens. Tribute Gardens is a destination where we could have an event celebrating these heroes.
Nothing's stopping anyone from doing it, you know, I mean, that would be great.
Well, what's stopping is they're having to be invited.
I, I. They should be invited to come and
Who?
Talk to the, the village people about.
A private foundation?
Yeah, why not?
The owners of, the owners of property.
Especially because there are other foundations like the Bob Woodruff Foundation that gives lots of money to supporting veterans. My friend Craig Newmark gives millions and millions of dollars to Bob Woodruff for veteran support. And that would be very interesting to get them involved, another foundation, to get reached out to. I don't know who the people are in advancement that do that, but, you know.
Me neither.
And it's our village folks who are going to be actually hanging these things up.
Correct.
Yeah, private, private, we'll, we'll handle it.
But for veterans from the village of Millbrook?
And the town of Washington.
And the town of Washington, okay.
Both living in, not the two veterans.
Veterans.
But the banners would be in the village, not the town. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, I mean, that, you know, that if the town would like to work on this, I think originally it was always thought about doing it in the village just because it's a more dense community, you know, I mean, seeing them on 44 is a little different than seeing them in the village, you know, so. But if the town wants to get involved in this, I'm, I'm, you know, it's certainly more than.
When you drive through East Kill, which I just did, there were like banners for miles and miles of the hometown heroes.
425 bands.
There you go, thank you.
And so when, when we're talking about a short time, they go up when and they come down when?
We put them off, like Peter and I discussed before.
Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Memorial Day to Labor Day and they come, or veterans.
Veterans.
Memorial Day to, Memorial Day to Veterans Day.
Isn't, isn't that overlap with more of the American flags too?
It might overlap with other flags too, you know, I mean.
No, I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. There's a lot of flags in the village, so that are not the American flag. So it might overlap with that as well.
I know, and it, doesn't the village put, or the veteran, who puts up the American flag?
The FABU.
The, the.
The FABU.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and if I could just clarify, I was not suggesting that you should go in Tribute Garden. I would be totally against that.
Which is why I'm not, I'm, which is why I'm not a person.
I am saying that Tribute Garden is itself, the, the name of it, it's tribute
It was a name, yes.
to our veterans. It's a tribute to those that we lost in the war. And so. And so, uh, these other communities that have this banner program do not have a Tribute Garden. And we do, and I think our memorial is much better than any of these ones.
We're very lucky to have Tribute Garden.
I'm not sure that Tribute Garden tributes to Afghanistan veterans, to, to Skanee.
I think World War One or World War Two.
Well, it's updated with-
The Vietnamese veterans, you know?
Vietnam.
There are some, okay, I, I know it cuts off at some point, uh, it just seems like there's a lot of other people that died, a lot of other wars, you know?
There, there's no, there's no overlap for Afghanistan, but we could certainly, you know, work, encourage them to do that. Uh, do we have young people in the, in our community? I know there's a woman shedding a big time plane suit was lost in the war in Afghanistan, and her, she has a hometown heroes banner. But are there, are there, have we lost village veterans in Afghanistan?
You have to include somebody, or actively, if you have somebody active, then, then, uh-
No, right, well, a veteran is exactly right, I mean, if you have certain, you have, you have a veteran.
We certainly have plenty of, of Iraq and Afghanistan veterans.
But we haven't, right, okay, but not memorial, not to memorialize, and the Tribute Garden is really a memorial.
No, that would-
Have you spoken to the other towns about what it's like to maintain these banners?
I've done personally.
Cause they really, they look, so they fade, they tear?
Well, that's the problem, a lot of the towns, like what we did in these Fishkills, we took them down before the winter, cleaned each banner, stored them in a cool, dry place, and we noticed after we started doing that, it was keeping the banners very fresh and the paint and everything. And once a banner got destroyed, we approached the family and asked if they want their banner back or if they wanna buy a, a new one. It started getting faded or tattered, then we take it down and move it from the sequence.
And they look very good when I drive by.
Damn.
Carolina, my family is-
I, I've been, I'm checking, and a lot of these guys in the county do this. There are a couple of things that, uh, I thought were interesting that might be, things not gonna add to the resolution. One is that, uh, Beadman has a disclaimer that says they're not responsible if the banner is stolen or damaged. That goes back to the applet. And another thing, going back to this fading situation, Hyde Park and Clinton specify that these banners only good for three years. Um, I don't know if, maybe it's, it's gonna be longer, give them, I take them down. See, I think I need a sunset provision, so the person who applies knows it's not there for that, but I heard other municipal, uh, elected numbers complain that once the banner goes up, they can't take it down.
Yeah.
Regardless of the state of the roads, can you put a sunset provision in the application?
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
Very good, very good, yeah.
I haven't seen that, so that's, that's a tough one.
And the second lesson, I guess, is who would be responsible for where they go? Who's gonna actually own this process?
Um, myself and a, and a small committee of, uh-
Okay, good, 'cause a committee is what we usually see the news, which makes sure there's some standing portion.
Yeah. I think I, cool.
And the other thing, and I would add, sorry, I worked for the VA for many years, okay.
Excuse me, excuse me, just one second, a, a future-
Yeah, we're on a tag.
No, we won't be renewing it, yeah.
Yeah, the sunset, you gotta put the sunset down there, yeah, I, you know, I don't wanna-
People expect, you know?
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
And a future resolution with, with more details is, you know, would be in the future, this is, well, to get this out of the way because we've already been receiving money, so this is strictly for the bank account, and this is all helpful feedback, um, yes, yeah?
I haven't seen a single woman on any of these banners, are there any in Fishkill? There are, okay, cause I keep looking. I used to work for the VA, and when we had a big, uh, protest once, all these Vietnamese nurses came in to help mark with us when the government was gonna shut down, and it was so impressive to see all these women who had served in Vietnam as nurses. And I'm sure a lot of those ladies now, it was thirty-five years ago, are dead, and maybe somewhere, but I'm glad. How many women in Fishkill, yeah?
I don't, I don't know.
No, okay, 'cause I look all the time looking for women, yeah, anyway, sorry.
No, I think to your point, you know, putting, putting a name to the face is, let's be honest, a lot different than having a tree in the Tribute Garden, which is great, don't get me wrong, um, so being able to honor the diverse, um, community of both living and deceased vets in our community is about showing others, about showing our youth especially, something about service and unity, and all of these, um, you know, ideals that kind of, this idea of America is, is built on. So, um, it's really designed to be, you know, an inclusive, um, project for the community to, to look up to.
I think, and, and, and in that, in that tone of being unity, maybe in the mayor's newsletter,
And that's, that's sort of the goal, thank you.
when we start to kind of start this process, maybe we can have, you know, you have like a couple designs and have people vote on what design they want.
Mm-hmm.
So, we can include the community in the choices, the size, and the colors, you know, just something basic, nothing crazy, you know?
Yeah.
And have three different designs that, you know, what we think would match.
Yeah, it was different, you know, we have-
We gotta, we gotta have some type of standard, you know, that we, we hold, like, I don't want, like, I don't wanna drive through, 'cause I have seen some of the hometown brackets and stuff like that, and some of them look terrible, like, they are terrible. We, we need like a standard bracket that we're gonna use, that we'll practice, that you could know to put up, you know? That, that has some type of like boundaries, so people aren't going crazy, like, I don't want like ratchet strap, you know, binders to it. I was talking to Peter about that, about the brackets, what we use on these Fishkill or Tasman for us, they're extremely easy to put up, they didn't have the whole flames on. Yeah.
Yeah.
I also don't think we need-
And they're going up what, on, on, uh, utility, utility poles, that, okay.
Telephone poles. Yeah. I also don't think we need two hundred fifty of these through the village, but if we had like a reasonable like amount that was in a nice area, you know, that we can maintain and keep them nice, and then like cycle in the next group of people that we can do, you know?
Yeah, right.
But I don't want it to get out of control, like, we, we do need a standard, I believe.
Yeah, especially if it's gonna be taking man hours, like, you know, we're gonna be spending that money and, you know, we need to kind of have a-
Yeah.
Exactly.
Uh-huh.
So, these are-
But you, you don't keep the aesthetic of the village, you do, I want to.
Not true.
I think having three different designs and having people vote on the, on which design we use, and, and the size,
These are set to have some-
Yeah.
I think are two probably important things.
What I can do is post to the, to the site, um, like a link to the main vendor for these, like, there's like a wide array of different, um, different choices.
That would be good, that would be good.
Oh, okay.
Something that Trustee Sochi and I have, have looked at, um-
Yeah.
So, you could just have people vote in and give their two cents.
Now, the utility poles are owned by Central Hudson, right?
Yeah, we have to get incentive from Central Hudson using, we have to go forward.
Yeah, that was my question, so you have to.
Seal, do you want to speak?
Sorry, I'll follow the rules, Peter. So, I got a lot of letters from people too, and they're way too long, we don't need to hear. But it's just the aesthetics that people worry about, I agree. I also hate to see Millbrook become just like all the other villages, and I find when I drive past them, besides me, they're not, no, yours are right, you're right, Ethan, they are nicer there, but you just don't even look at them, you know, they're out of view. And someone just gave you some pictures 'cause they found them, they were supposed to deliver them early, they were on network. But it's true, and they're up by the wires, I, I imagine you'll try to do better than that, but it looks really unattractive 'cause it draws your eye up into the worst feature we have is ugly telephone poles with wires.
Hmm.
So, I would ask everybody to consider that, and just one more thing, I, I mean, I would have been early, I realize it's late, but it wasn't on the agenda. So, that would be nice, I, I checked the agenda and followed 'cause I wanted to speak about this. But, um, it wasn't on the agenda for July or June, so I didn't know to come in. And now, today it's on the agenda, so thank you, it's public comment, comments and that, so I appreciate that. But I would just like something like this to be on the agenda so we can speak beforehand, instead of bothering you with it afterwards. And, um, and the last thing is there are lots of cute things that many towns are doing, I just got some pictures out there. And we're on a tree committee, we're hoping that whenever we put in new trees now, maybe people would like to purchase these brass signs, this is that picture, they're beautiful. People put it down there, um, there's all sorts of cute things that are going on. I thought even, I love how they do the high school seniors, and, you know, a part-time, people could buy an individual one, and this one particularly says, um, land is a free, because of the brave, I thought that was nice, you know, put a picture on these, and just put them up, you know, for a couple months, put them up for Veterans Day, and I think they're easier to take down. They definitely have to come down, 'cause they would get ruined, but they're waterproof, and I, so, it may be too late, I understand that, you know, but just, um, I just, there's other options, and I hate to see Millbrook look like every other town, and as long as I do believe that Ethan will take good care of them, from being a thankful, um, I don't find them attractive, but that's not, I'm not everybody, so I'm not trying to say that, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, I appreciate, that all makes sense.
Yeah, well, you're fine, that all makes sense.
So, all the rules is they put me in the thing.
No, 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 I appreciate it.
Can I just thank somebody though? Whoever, I bet it to you, Ethan, took out that, that pole that stuck up by the crosswalk?
You can thank your husband for turning it on.
No, no, I complained about what they painted it, which was huge, 'cause it used to blend right in.
Oh, my, after, after he's home, it's all, it's stopped down, yeah.
Well, they painted it, which was a help, but the way you've been to me is just great, thank you. That'll save somebody, me proud of them, thank you.
I'll just say that I don't see the reason why Millbrook cannot look like other communities that are honoring the people that died for our country, number one. Number two, to put a sign up for the high school student who graduated, and then you put a sign up for a veteran that died in war, I feel are very, very different kinds of, um, honors, and I don't see them at all the same.
I think she was just making a point of a template, you know?
So, it did have the template, I think, Fiona, Willie, George, whatever, and then, you know, Sergeant so-and-so, Major so-and-so dying in combat. I feel those would be very different kinds of honors.
What I'm just thinking about this, is there any way that they could be not at a car level? I'm, my concern with this is how distracting it is.
Definitely gonna be higher, definitely gonna be higher.
They're out there like there, every time I drive by, I see them all the time, I was looking, yeah, if I know anybody.
That's exactly right, you should be looking at the road and not at decorative banners that you can't even stop and read. That's the thing that's most, I think, a little, I understand why and to honor people, but not when you're in a moving vehicle. It just seems dangerous and, and, and ill-conceived.
People walk, people walk on roads though too.
Exactly, hopefully.
That my point was could we lower them so that they could read them the way they read the history and village markers?
Oh, I appreciate the input for sure.
That was my point, really, I just think driving and reading them is dangerous.
Yeah, that would be a problem.
If you're looking at the size, if you're looking at, you think of how much easier it is to mount and dismount, to repair, if you could access them.
They'd be ripped off by vehicles.
Yeah, that's what I think, or-
I mean, that's, that's, well.
Depends where, if you put them, you, if we're not putting them on Franklin Avenue, then you're putting them on residential streets.
If they're taught.
You're putting them on residential streets, hopefully the vehicles are not gonna drive by and lift them up.
Something to consider, and, and I think a middle ground, that is something I would need more.
Yes, definitely, yes. Someone else mentioned also, we have fallen firefighters, we have fallen EMT people, are we, we seem not to be including, there's more than veterans, there are more people providing service to the community who've lost their lives in that service community. So, I don't know if the grant is specific or whether that is-
The grant is, um, I mean, most communities are, are pretty limited to banners, I think if you expand it, nothing, not something I'm opposed to,
I don't mean not the banner, I mean, putting the firefighter on the banner.
it would definitely increase the, increase, it would increase the number of, of banners.
Uh, there hasn't been really many, I mean, re, besides nine eleven, um, a couple towns, uh, two, uh, maybe five, six years ago, the Sidikipsi firemen died in line of duty, but there isn't really many around that die in line of duty that much anymore. As opposed to veterans who, uh, put their lives at, in danger fighting for our country.
Thank you, Matt, that makes sense to me. Mike, did you have anything?
No, I, I, I think the, the pragmatic parts of how this is gonna play out over the years is my concern. Someone mentioned that we could have up to two hundred and fifty signs, and I'm saying, just the sheer task of trying to put those up, take those down and whatever, plus the fact this is a five thousand dollar grant, and going forward, is this gonna become a municipal responsibility when a sign has to get replaced in three years?
Uh, no.
Because that, you know, so then you've got tough decisions to make, you know, there isn't a veteran that doesn't deserve a picture someplace and a place of honor,
so that, that, that should be part of the discussion, it's what it is, and it's a given, okay? But it's the, the practical aspect of, you know, you can't establish the program not knowing where the money is gonna come from five years from now.
All the money is coming from private people, whether this grant was just kind of, uh, very, very helpful to get us off the ground, but otherwise, that two hundred fifty dollars will pay for the bracket and the banner for every, every, every veteran.
For three years.
Yeah, unless it gets damaged before that, and in which case, the onus is still on the private citizen, yeah.
And the, and the other thing is I, I wanna make sure that, um, we, it, it'll be a lot more work, obviously, for Ethan. I applaud what he's done so far, you know, just in improvements with the highway and the car, and what he's taken on. But for Sarah also, and the, and the people in the office who would be getting these applications and having to process them, keep track of the paperwork, we're asking a lot, and I just wanna make sure we're not, you know, we're not out of line and, and saying, oh, we'll, we'll take care of that. This, these people work hard, as, and I don't think that we should be glum about, you know, what they're, they're gonna have to do to be able to make this happen. And I don't know if it's gonna come up in the discussion when we talk about their salary, um, but they're doing a, a good job now, and I don't wanna see them taxed, you know, beyond what they should be doing, uh, on some, uh, thing.
Does a grant include administrative costs?
Um, it could, it could, I'll say, um, that we already do a lot of things that are village-related, like MBA and various other, you know, work with different projects and events in the village that are not village-sponsored. So, this is not added to the ordinary by any stretch, but I hear your point upon, um, in terms of how, you know, that, if it gets to be too much, that, that certainly is, is a, something to keep in mind.
And, and we'll, we'll have, uh, we will have further discussions, and we, we've all heard you out, and they will be strongly considered, and I think it'll reflect in the mayor's newsletter as, as things unfold.
And your committee, I mean, I, I think, if we put that committee together, you wanna, you wanna have so, a variety of voices.
And your committee.
Right, so we can just hear before you, so we can participate in the way.
And then update for that. It's going, yeah, we will, we will, definitely.
I'm glad this brought so many different people out to this meeting, it's, um, it's very, it's very good for, for democracy here. Um, so, can, you know, to be continued for sure, um, I'd like to make a resolution to, um, establish a separate bank account to accept the funds. Um. I'd like to make a resolution, um.
So, it'll be another line?
So, we're authorized to accept five thousand dollars.
I see more than five thousand.
Through the twenty twenty-five Veterans Micro Grant Program. It's collect and deposit, a separate bank account with a fee of two hundred fifty dollars from each person to sponsor a banner for the military banners project, I will make that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, thank you. Look, Wes.
Mary Doro?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Murphy?
Deputy Mayor Murphy, aye.
Justice Buckland?
abstained.
Justice Nelson?
Abstained.
Justice Hootie?
Aye.
Well, we stand there, thank you so much, thank you for everyone's input there, um. One other update from my end, which I didn't mention, sidewalk projects, Patrick, um. I don't know if you saw my email, uh, the surveying is done?
Yep.
So, I think we'll check in with, um, Rennie in a couple weeks, maybe, and see what the next step is to continue the north side of Franklin rehab of the sidewalks in the business district, so that's a good thing we got out of it. So, that is it from me, um, any other updates from the trustees, excuse me?
Yeah, so we, uh, we, the Shade Tree Committee did, um, finally get our, our, there's some trees that were problematic down. I also have, um, there's an issue of membership on the Shade Tree Committee. I have letters from the current members of the Shade Tree Committee who would like to continue their service, um, varying in, in one and two-year terms, I also have a new, um, member, um, Mrs. Ducks is, has, um, volunteered to join the Shade Tree Committee.
Who's on the committee right now?
Right now, it is, uh, Eldar, Schumanov, Seal, Colopy, Kevin McGrane, and myself.
Okay.
And we have five members. Um, in terms of when their, their, their appointments and so forth were, um, begun, we have, uh, that, that is a bit vague. But we have a, all of the people who are on the Shade Tree Committee- But we have, all of the people who are on the shade tree committee have gotten to me, um letters of intent to continue on the shade tree committee. Um, and if you would like, at our next meeting, we can, you know, vote on on, you know, their one and two-year terms, and we can start them whether in January, if that, I don't, I don't really know how that has worked in the past, but their terms can start in January, and we can, you know, we can keep track of that going forward.
I I think we should definitely keep track of that going forward.
Obviously, yeah.
Um, I don't know if Mike has any other details about this, I mean, a lot of this stuff is in your bylaws, so I would just direct you to
Yeah, no, I've looked at that.
take a look, and um, I believe every member has to be voted on by this board.
Right, and they have
Not in turn of any.
Agreed, they have. And and all of the people who currently sit on the shade tree committee have been approved by this board in the past, as to
We just don't know when.
Exactly, exactly, and so what I'm, what I'm proposing is that at our next meeting, the people who currently sit on the shade tree committee and plus this new um volunteer to join the shade tree committee, which we put up at by members um complement that we are, that we have.
How did Mrs. Ducks find out about this?
Um
Is this widely known in the community, or?
Didn't she, actually, her husband had had volunteered in the past, and they were one of the families that was um was, had a tree taken down, right over here, that's a big problematic one. And I think that that's in part how they were aware of, I mean, yeah, they're aware of the work, because they have been directly impacted by it.
I might suggest that this be opened up to the broader community.
Sure, of course.
You know, I don't know anything about the shade tree or what they do, besides what you kind of tell us every month, which is great, um, but there might be other people out there that might be interested.
Well, anyone, anyone who is interested in joining the shade tree committee is more than willing to send me a letter. Um, and we will consider their, you know, obviously, their membership, we can have three village members and two, um, what do you call them?
At large.
At large.
At large members, right, sorry, so people who are who are not necessarily in the village in Millbrook.
Maybe you can send just a couple sentences to Sarah, and she could put it on the website.
Right, sure.
So we can be as inclusive as we can.
You bet.
That's great, thank you.
Welcome.
Went to the town of Washington meeting last week. I got a lot going on now, um. They brought up a good point, um, let's see, the the B and B at the Bennett Roundabout. The subject tank, um, their application was denied, so there's a time lapse, so they have to reapply now. So that's gonna take some time, um. And then on there, there's the Board of Appeals about a pool being built, and a neighbor dispute, one person saying, no, it's too close to, so they're disputing it. I think it's going in litigation at this point.
Hmm.
Um Mobile homes, uh, whether they take them or not in the town of Washington, uh, the code is undetermined, so um you know, the bill, the building inspector needs to go through its earnings, needs to make a decision, you know, um, things like that. Climate Smart Community, we thought maybe they could go in with us, but we've already sent in an application, so we're midstream right now. You know, like, 'cause, 'cause they have, they brought, it is a good point, you know, we have, um, if we do a community composting thing, and we take it to the dump where you can put it there, and then farmers can come and pick it up, it's in the town of Washington. So it would make perfect sense to, you know, have two heads, you know, two heads together on the climate smart. But if we've already made our application, and if that application gets accepted, then that's a problem, because, you know, we've already started the process. And I don't think they'd be able to join in on midstream and stuff like that. So that was kind of a brief discussion that we had about that. Um They talked about what the pool plan will be over at town of Washington, whether they do like a splash pad, or whether they're, you know, gonna fill that in and bite the bullet and fill it in, because there aren't enough people going there, so that's really what the case is.
Yeah. I'm on the committee, actually, I was twenty second in that.
Oh.
And uh, we're trying to come up with a master plan, but we're looking for input from people in the commit, in the community, because we need to come up with the plans, and we can go after grants to continue projects there.
Should we write a notice, or email, or come to a meeting?
Uh, I can get you, whoa, I could probably put that somewhere, where can I post that? A meeting, the next meeting day for the committee.
Um, Nicole can put it on our website, and
Okay.
Is it about keeping the pool open?
Yeah, well, it's about coming up with a plan to either market it better, so we get more use out of it, um, whether we have
Sustainability.
Yeah, the scalability of it, the sustainability of it, because right now it's a really rough shade, and it needs a lot of money. But if we don't have a plan or a master plan to go through everything, then we don't even know what our end goal is, you know, we have to come up with something to go to, um. So, right now, we're just in the beginning phases of that, we have only had two meetings, and our second one was at the town on the twenty second, and we just kind of went over the facility, so.
Put it on my website, because I have a lot of grannies I know that take their grandchildren there, and they would hate to see the pool closed, so however, that can happen.
Kids that, yeah. But even with like, it's program, it's more than just like the physical structure of everything, it's like programs, you know, uh, how to maintain lifeguards, and
Yeah. Maybe like, dwell lessons for little ones or something, or
Little bit longer, yeah. Beginning of September, Labor Day weekend.
I would urge you to go to the town board meeting.
Yeah.
Town board controls recreation.
The recreation
Okay, I'll let them, I'll let
I'm a big fan of pools as well, but I think they would love to hear that feedback.
Yes. You'd have, I think the uh, the recreation committee's kind of private, it's like between the people that are, they're playing, I guess, it's what they're trying to come up with. A group of people that they put together, but if you go to the town board meetings, then you can probably take your case.
Because everyone was disappointed they closed before Labor Day.
Yeah, exactly. Oop.
The the other issue they had was, which was a very good idea, is to have some kind of tree removal ordinance, because there's some developer that basically just took a swath of it and just did a whole acre and plowed it down. And, you know, if there are some really big existing trees, it would be good if like, you can't, you know, you can't take a tree down if it's, you know, eighteen inches. You know, something like that, um, just to keep our environment, you know, because once the trees are taken down, they're really, they take a long time to to kind of recover. So they had, they were talking about something like that, um. And then some kind of noise odorant ordinance, but it's really hard to do with noise odorants, they said, because of, you know, garbage trucks come at seven. Can't have it nine to five, you know what I mean?
Really before, before that.
Before that, right, exactly, so, and that's it, that that's all that was on the on their agenda.
Thank you, Trustee Mason.
Yeah.
Jan, just real quick, if you have something?
Uh, yes, um, well, some of you know me, I'm Jennifer Plastin. And the town of Washington and the village recently received a grant for twenty-five thousand. And it was specifically for community conversations. So it's directed not to any project, the project in itself for the twenty-five thousand is to have these conversations, which eventually can come to our two boards for approval.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And two of the things that have come up is, since Mike and I and Tim worked on Climate Smart and did the application, a lot of the big items that we did, we did in lockstep with the town.
Love.
They didn't really want to join forces, but now they've come to me to see if we'll join them. All because of the grant that we got. And of course, the 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 town of Washington is bigger and it has a larger population.
Right.
But it speaks to all of us, and the things like the recreation and pool, which is the very underpinning of our community, children, what they do after school, what they do in the summer, the community pool and recreation is a big idea. So those are one of the things that when we do formulate and have these meetings, I would like all of you to be involved, and the only way, the notices are gonna be coming out, but I hope through the mayor will newsletter, I hope through all of your touchpoints, the website, Sarah, um, that it gets out there, because very often, like the Shade Tree Commission, I didn't know they were looking for members. And I know a lot of people that are truly tree people, who who could really help rather than just being a fervent volunteer. Right, so those are the kind of things that, whether they're in the newsletter or on the website, uh, more of us need to know more things. So community conversations, I don't know what they're gonna call it, but I know we're meeting next week again. We have a core group, the funds have gone to the library to dispense the funds, but they're to be used for us to communicate and no other reason. And of course, the pool and the rec is important, so I hope somehow the representative, um
And you'll be at the uh, community day as well.
We're gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna be at four to five places or tables.
Excellent, thank you, thank you, Jan, more to come on that as well, um.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, uh, I will make a motion to, uh, Jordan, do I have a second? Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
Two men.
Sure.
My name is Luna Poles, I've lived here fifteen years. Thank you for listening. I know that when I hear people speak about the weather, or about what detergents they use, or what time they got to bed last night, I turn off. I would rather talk about how we can help people better themselves economically, or how we can help them by driving to the doctors, or how we can financially help people pay their hospital bills. This year, I want to help by being neighbors to neighbors. Right now, we are hearing about some of our neighbors being detained and incarcerated, not because they broke family laws, but because their skin is different color than mine is. I worry about Millbrook's neighbors being stopped and being incarcerated. Fortunately, so far, that hasn't happened. But six counties of the forty-plus counties in New York State have signed agreements with ICE. That means that there is a partnership with the sheriff, that he can perform specific immigration officer functions under ICE's supervision to identify and arrest our neighbors. By the way, if you're interested in two eighty-seven G, look it up. I don't want Dutchess County to sign on to this agreement, and Gerbra Houston doesn't want that s- e- either. She has talked to the sheriff about it and said to him, please stay out of Millbrook and Armenia. I hope that Dutchess County doesn't become one of the counties that doesn't highly regard our immigrant neighbors. They are working now as farm laborers, landscape workers, restaurant chefs, and household help. We couldn't live without them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to close the meeting, Jordan, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Yeah.